It is my pleasure to call your Hannover Borough Council March 2025 meeting to order. I request that we stand and recite our Pledge of Allegiance, follow that with a brief moment of silence.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please have a seat. I will ask Secretary Felix to call the rules.
Mr. Bob?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fuentes?
Here.
Mrs. Funk?
Here.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Here.
Mr. Hagberg?
Here.
Mr. Kress?
Here.
Mr. Lookinbill?
Here.
Mr. Reckart?
Here.
Mr. Rowland?
Here.
Dr. Ruff?
Here.
Solicitor Schultes?
Here.
Manager Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Whitman?
Here.
Secretary Felix? Do you have any other counsel here?
He's never been here.
All right, we have a forum.
Okay, I'll read for the record that there was not an executive session between the last gathering of council and this evening's public meeting. That'll move us into public comment, the prior to meeting or prior to agenda, public comment period. First, I have here Robert Holt. Could I come forward and address counsel?
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Robert Holt from the Third Ward. I'm going to bring up a point again that I brought up at the Finance Committee because it's astounding, and I just don't know how, when you put something out for bid, you told the bidders that you were willing to spend $3 million before the bids were submitted. And sure enough, none of the bidders submitted a bid for less than $3 million. I don't know all the intricate legal details and nuances of running bids and contracts, but I've never heard of a government agency that told the bidders how much they were willing to spend before they did it. And I'm going to ask you not to do that when you do the bidding for the 44 Frederick Street project. And I'm going to appeal again for a public hearing on the gasification project. Before you go much further, you're all lined up to let Earth Care Solutions submit an application and begin the process, and I think there should be a public hearing now, not down the road when the Department of Environmental Protection decides there should be one. And then it's cooked. It's 75% of the way, and you know it's hard to turn, it's like turning an aircraft carrier. You've got to go five miles downrange to do it. That's why the Navy never turns them unless they absolutely have to. So I just think we don't know everything we need to know. We heard presentations, we've heard all the positive stuff about it, but we haven't had a real discussion about the potential negative aspects of it. And there is new technologies to deal with these forever chemicals that have been the driver behind this project, and there's ways to deal with this upstream now potentially before it gets to the sewage waste. And I just think if this is such a great thing, and it's such a benefit, why can't it be built in the borough limits? Why does it have to be built in somebody else's backyard? Why couldn't it be built out at the Black Rock landfill near Lurin Line Barrel? Just why does it have to be built over in Adams County? I know it's a convenient site, a site that has its own problems, and I thank you for your time.
Next, we have Grace, are you for the number one, first one?
Say that again.
Are you for the first speaking, please?
Well, I do either, I don't really know.
Let's do it now, avoid the suspense.
Because it's sort, it's all Carol's fault that I had something to say.
I knew it.
It's a trolle baker.
And I want to get everyone behind it. And as for AJ's blessing, I'm not sure he's given it to me yet. He didn't say no. We play phone tag a lot because we can't do it without his blessing. First of all, I just want to say I thought the meet and greet was phenomenal, the way, I mean, I know not enough people came, but the way everyone presented themselves was phenomenal. I've just heard nothing but wow comments. Of course, I look for wow comments, you know, who wants the other ones? What I want to do, we were a real class act, that was what I was going to say. What I want to do is have, and I started this about six years ago and left all the mess to AJ when I did a Hannover cleanup project. I won't, well, I probably will leave all the mess to you, AJ, but I'll try not to. But I want to do it by ward this year, and I've talked, I couldn't believe it, the new, Kevin, the new manager of New Hope, and Erica, the new manager of, well, relatively new, of Hack, just jumped right on it and want to join with us on this. And what we'll do it by ward, Pennsylvania Beautiful has agreed to give us all the gloves and garbage bags, I think you told me to go there, Mayor. Anyway, well, it'd be, do it 9/11 because that's the National, you know, Service Day. But that means you've got to get someone in your ward to kind of be in charge, and you've got a collection point. So we'll get all these trash bags. And it's something I'm just starting to think about, but I'd want you to think about it so when I talk to you, you can say, yes, of course, Grace, I'll support that. And I don't think I need anything from you other than your support. I mean, I think we can get it done, well, I need it from AJ, but, you know, he doesn't count, he doesn't sit up front. And, you know, I really think this will be something, and I'm also going to give you something, and this is probably illegal because I'm talking about church and state at the same time, but I'll say it anyway. We're having a huge, the whole Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, which like there's 50,000 members in the United States, is doing an Elevate Easter program. They've got mass media out to try to get Easter promoted in places like our borough as much as Christmas does, because Christmas gets so commercialized, it's not as easy. So we're having a community concert, I've got you all invitations. It's on Palm Sunday because people are too busy on Easter, so it's going to be on Palm Sunday. We hope to have some community groups there, and the music is usually really good, it's free, free parking, and free food. So come. And I've got plenty more invitations. I get all the biggies mad at me because they say, I don't want the invitations just lying around. I give them out.
Are you sure, you sure you need that many?
Yes, I need that. You've got to be like you're in school and pass these down.
Okay, we'll pass these down, sure.
Thank you.
All wrapped up, thank you, Grace.
Thanks, Grace.
Okay, anyone else? Community media, with your able assistance, could you please connect us in an orderly fashion to anyone online wishing to address counsel?
Those joining us via Zoom, you're welcome to unmute yourself if you'd like to address counsel.
Seeing none, we will close public comment portion number one and move into the consent agenda. Is there any movement to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
To move.
Second.
Discussion required. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of approving the consent agenda items signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Flipping the sheet over, is there a motion? I don't like doing it myself, so I'm going to ask the distinguished councillor, Kress, if there's a motion for the Department of Water Resources asks for this month.
Would you like me to read that?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I have a lot of questions.
Authorize council president's signature of the form E-GP to move forward with necessary permitting for the Stormwater Authority gasification project.
Chair, second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I do. I have several questions for Eric.
Mr. Maynes, would you please come and sit in the hot seat?
It is literally hot right now.
Yes.
This may seem, you know, elementary, but I think the public, and it's on record now, when you answer these, they'll know that the questions were asked. So can you tell them and myself again what gasification is?
So if I could, just one thing before I answer the question?
Yes.
Because from some of your questions from last week, I think that what we're going to actually do is have an informational session, and I want to call it a hearing because a hearing implies sort of negative things, but I do think we should have a public information session where there can be questions and answers about the process, and I think we owe bringing in all of the right people, and I will not sit in front of you and tell you I'm that right person. So that's going to be my suggestion is at the next Stormwater Authority that we carve that out on the agenda for a public information session, we get in front of it with some social media so that people are aware, that they can come out and engage, we get all of the experts in the room so that every question can be answered.
So then that, Mr. Chair, that would be something that we would hold approval on tonight in lieu of that?
Potentially. In order to do that procedurally, you would need to make a motion to table, have it second, and council would have to approve that. It's already been made, the motion's been made in the affirmative, as in we will call that question.
Okay. Well, then I would just say-
Can I, can I make a comment?
We're in the question portion right now.
Right.
Can I make a comment? The submittal of that paper only begins the conversation. It doesn't determine the outcome of whether this gets approved or not. It starts the clock as far as discussions with DEP because you can't do anything until you have that. The second thing I want to point out is with Eric was saying on the presentation or the informational session, the developer has offered, for anybody who wants to go, tours of the facility. So if you want to physically go and see the plant that they are currently operating, they have offered to do the tours of the facility.
The one that was already built?
Correct.
I just want the public to know what it is and why we're doing it, what the benefits are, so.
Yes, but the two, the two items are separate.
Okay.
In the sense that it just starts the conversation, it doesn't-
Okay, well, this is still a beautiful forum to get that conversation started, and then when they come to the next one, maybe they'll have a little more information from the answers you get tonight. So can I, is it okay if I continue?
And any other questions for?
I mean, I would support Carol's amended motion, however, procedurally, we would care to do that.
We'll let her make, sorry, we'll let her make the motion then.
Okay, then I make a motion to table, but I want to ask my question.
We need to move forward.
You're making a motion.
Which question?
Well, I have six of them. Is that something that would have to wait then?
I think you probably should because we're establishing that not enough information has been provided for you to feel comfortable and potentially other councillors.
Okay.
And we're talking about a scenario whereby we can put something together to engage the public to answer your six questions and I'm the 36 additional questions, so.
And then will that, will that be televised so they can go back and look? See, right now, we're on film and they can go back and look.
At a minimum, it would be a community outreach endeavor that the public would have an invitation to attend that would be clearly communicated. Whether they, whether it's too inconvenient for them to attend in person, I can't say. It may not be online.
I just think that would be very unfortunate since we're online now, that, to ask the questions and-
You have two people watching.
You could, but if someone has a question, councilman, later on, I could say, listen, that was at the meeting the other night, if you want to hear the answers.
Just procedurally, we don't say we don't, we're not going to do anything, and now we're going to talk about it.
Okay, I was asking your leniency, that's all, I identified the chair.
I know where I stand, thank you.
Okay.
I thank you for the respect of the chair, appreciate that.
Bill.
So you're going to make the motion?
To table.
To table?
And I'll second, I'll second it.
What, if I may comment, what if the two things occurred in parallel?
Yeah.
Why do we have to stop this to do the other?
No, it's just, it's cleaner, I would say.
Yeah, but it takes more time.
It does. Are we in a rush?
I don't know, if it's worthwhile doing, then it, we're in a rush.
It's worthwhile next month, right? If it's worthwhile doing, it's worthwhile next month, too.
It won't be next month, it'll be May.
Okay. Or there-
Unless you were to call a Stormwater Authority before April, which you would, certainly within your rights to do so, but normally, it would be scheduled for May.
All right, okay.
What does this really do? What does this do? It just says something about approving a signature?
This is allowing the forms to be submitted to DEP to begin that conversation with DEP about the project and start some of their review of it.
Do we have any approval further on down the line for this?
I think there's a number of things you're going to have to approve until you get to the end of this.
This just doesn't really engage us.
Yeah, I mean, there's all sorts of legal agreements and things that will have to happen, and then ultimately signing off on what would be the permit. And I certainly, to your point, I don't, I don't want to seem evasive with the questions. I want to make sure you get the right answers, and I want to make sure you get the right answers in a forum where everyone can enjoy those. I'm not the right one to give you the specific answers, so I just want to make sure you get them. I don't, I don't want it to come off that I'm trying to avoid the question or anything, I just want to make sure you get the right answers.
No, I don't get that, for me, it's about them.
Agreed. And I'm the process guy, trying to say that, yes, we can invoke a process which will be communicative and fair. That's what we do with everything else, so if there's apprehension, now is your time to voice your apprehension. I believe I'm going to conclude discussion right now, I have a motion, I have multiple seconds to table agenda item 501.
All right.
So we will be specifically voting on tabling it, all right?
Yes.
Motion to table, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
No.
Can I have a show of hands for the nays, because I need to count them. One, two. The motion to table passes, so it is concluded this evening. With that, we'll move into Planning Commission, agenda items, councillor Hagberg?
Approve resolution 1432 for 141 East Hannover Street preliminary and final subdivision plan.
Second.
Any discussion required? Seeing none, I'll close discussion, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? That motion passes. We will move into Finance, Personnel, and Administration, the distinguished councillor, Kress?
My favorite part. Okay, 701, change order number 34 and the amount of $2,772 for replacement repair of masonry wall and sprinkler room. B, change order number 37, $974 for installation of a junction box in the lobby. C, change order 40, is a credit for $6,060 for reuse of existing HVAC wiring harnesses. D, change order number 42 and the amount of $492 for additional rack-to-runway kit and IT room. E, change order number 43 and the amount of $1,792 for install coax cable for three rooftop antennas.
What's the net of that? About nothing, isn't it?
Yeah, that one was bounced out.
Correct.
Five, six, yeah, about zero. I would make a motion.
Second.
Second, as you say.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question, all in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
7.02, York County Uniform Construction Code, Board of Appeals. A, approve resolution number 1433 for adjustment of criteria for membership of the board.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like some clarification on that, please.
Who's got that one covered?
Was it?
Mr. Miller?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
The Borough of Hannover is an opted municipality, which means we've opted in to enforce a Uniform Construction Code as it is adopted and put down forth by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Due to the fact that we have that and we are enforcing the Uniform Construction Code in the form of making sure there's permits and proper construction of any type of large residential project and commercial projects throughout the borough, we are required to have an appeals board. We opt in to being with the York County Appeals Board, who actually services more than one municipality rather than having our own appeals board. So therefore, typically, from time to time, there are updates and things that they wish to have done, this is one of those things, but we are required to have it because we do enforce the Uniform Construction Code. You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, I have a motion as second on the Uniform Construction Code, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. At this time, we will open us up for the final public comment portion of the meeting, and I have Sandy Mau, you wanted to speak at the end. Please come forward and address counsel.
I'm here again regarding the library and employee issue. I'm going to ask that the council members refrain from maligning the work of the individuals and the companies in that library. That includes ECI, Lowbar, Walton, Whirley, et cetera. ECI Construction has, and if you can view this on their website, has a, let's see, portfolio of successful projects. On Saturday, the word shoddy was used to describe the wallpaper work. There was nothing shoddy about anything that these companies did. You worked behind their backs to not fix the HVAC system, so the wallpaper came down, and then some people even helped it come down. And then, well, it came down too fast, and they had to plaster it back up, so that when they went to take it off again, then they had an issue and they had to paint over top of it. In addition, if you would have taken your time on Saturday and walked along that, you see where that dividing, that black space along there?
Baseball wing.
Okay, if you would have taken your time to look at it, you would have seen spaces about that big from the work that was done by lack of professionals. You were also provided a manual, a maintenance manual, on how to maintain that building. And I personally witnessed two of your employees come into that library and ask for that manual because we now have to start to use it, and that was after the arbitration started. I mean, there's no reason to slander or to-
Do you have anything else, Ms. Mau?
Pardon me?
Do you have anything else this evening?
Yes, one more thing. You are to instruct your employees to restrain themselves in aiding and abetting a particular stalker. I don't have the floor here this evening to get questions and answers, but you are hereby put on notice.
Truly heard. We also have Mr. Holt, you want to address counsel a second time?
Robert Holt from the Third Ward. As painful as it is sometimes, I thank you for hearing voices of dissent. I'm going to go back to this Steering Committee on the reservoir projects and that it should be held in public. We should know at every step of the process, we should know who is on and how the selection was happening, and we should be able to sit and hear the discussions in real time, in a personal setting. I don't know how you could move forward with something so big without ensuring that the public has every opportunity to have input, especially when we hear discussions about mass development out there, and your words, mass development, and luxury cabins, things like that. Just the rationale for spending $140,000 on a boat dock and an ADA accessible kayak launch that I don't know who benefits, except the company got the no-bid exclusive rights for five years to run a commercial rental business. So I'm asking you to make it public, as it should be, and I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up the open container law. You need it. And from my count, even if we go by the police chief's numbers, you're already about a third of the way towards the numbers you had in drunk driving and a good bit on the numbers you had on public drunkenness, and we're only three months in. And I just think, I hear all these arguments about you don't want to harm business, but what are you going to do to make sure the public doesn't get harmed? The citizens of this town and the citizens in other communities who, drunk drivers and others who get enabled to go out and abuse alcohol and drugs, and then they go out and hurt other people in communities that are 20 and 30 miles away. It's, it's the decency to do, and that's the whole basis of law. It's man's attempt, as frail as it may be at times, that the attempt of law is to provide decency for the community and for people to each other. So I thank you again, I know I stretch your patience, thank you.
Bill, can I ask a question?
I'm sorry, but you can't, this is, this is public comment, not public, not question and answer.
I know, I'm always off base here.
So.
But, but what I need to know is-
Mrs. Funk, I believe I said no to the question.
Are we going to continue to have, address the issue of the open container law? Are we going to continue to address it?
That's a council decision.
Well-
It'll be the Governance Committee's next agenda.
What'd you say?
The Governance Committee will handle it on the next agenda.
Are you going to have it on the next agenda?
The next meeting that we have.
Okay. All right, I'm going to let my problem go. I've already addressed it to several people here tonight, and in regards to counsel and charges that are being sat on counsel when they request certain items, so I will let that rest. We will discuss it internally, if that's okay with everybody. Okay? Just we should not have to be charged when we have problems and we need paperwork that is, I have a problem right now, big problem, okay, with, with Bright Speed. And I wanted to get the agenda because I couldn't get it. I'm completely shut down. You can call me, but I can't call out. And tech from Bright Speed and AT&amp;T, et cetera, okay, will not do any of that in-house to begin for at least two, two more days. So in the meantime, I couldn't do anything. I'm completely locked out of basically everything, glow fiber, the whole nine yards. So I called to have the agenda printed up, and there was a misunderstanding, and I was going to be charged 30-some dollars for the agenda because I couldn't get into it. It just was not feasible and workable, I still can't. So I'm just saying maybe we better look at changing a few things because none of us here are paid. We do this free, gratis for the community, and I just, now, tonight went well, but I was concerned with not being able to represent my ward and the community, okay, because I couldn't get into any of that. So that's all I'm saying. I don't think we should be charged when we're asking, you know, for material that won't be seen by us. It put me at a disadvantage, okay? All right, thank you.
Community media, is there anyone online who would like to publicly comment?
Participants are free to unmute yourself if you'd like to address counsel.
Seeing none, I'll close public comment and hit the highlight of announcements before we conclude this evening, the first being the reminder that the borough offices where we are currently at will be closed April 10th, 11th, and 14th. Also, for anyone following at home or planning on following at home, it is important to note that we will not be covered by community, community media services on either April 16th or the 23rd, so you're just going to have to do it the old-fashioned way, come out and see us. And lastly, in the way of announcements, we do, or- And lastly, in the way of announcements, we do, are proud to announce that we'll be celebrating our ribbon-cutting ceremony, right? All things are on track for that? On Wednesday, April 23rd at 5:00 p.m., which will precede the council meeting that evening. Before we go, I think it's important to note that it's kind of the chairman's minute, if you will. We hear a lot of things said at council meetings, but I think it's important to remind everyone here, as well as the general public and council as a whole, that council acts through a process which is democratic, and it is the voting process through majority. Counselors are free to express opinions, as they oftentimes do. Individuals in the public are certainly always free and welcome to address council with their opinions. But the expression of an opinion or the expression of words in general does not affect make. At this time, I will request a motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or adjourned? Thank you.